Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We did not have a closed session meeting of council prior to this, so I'll ask the clerk if, for quorum, or for roll call, and ask if we have quorum.
Mayor Garrettson, there's quorum.
Thank you. I'll just start the meeting, I guess, as I have been the last two council meetings, and provide you with the final update to, for those of you that don't know, to the street sign auction that the city of Kingston was having. So, as you know, we were selling the street, the old street signs in the university district. And I am so pleased to announce that the total amount of money that was raised through the different online auctions for the street signs was just under fourteen thousand dollars. Some of the street signs went for as much as over five hundred dollars. The Aberdeen ones went for over five hundred, Baggett Street was over five hundred. So it was an extremely successful event. We also had a few other items that the city was selling, surplus items like filing cabinets and stuff like that, that were also bulked into that charity auction. And so the total amount of money, including those items that was raised, was just, right around, just under eighteen thousand dollars for pro kids. And to give you a sense of what that's worth, that essentially will put fifty-three kids into sports in the city of Kingston that otherwise would not have had access to that. So, everybody give yourself a pat on the back for that. (laughter) So, next, as I said, we did not have a closed meeting of the committee of the whole, so I'll ask for approval of the addits, if somebody will move those. Councillor Patterson and Councillor George. We have the one motion of congratulations, that is actually an amendment, or changes to one that's on the agenda. We have a delegation, and we have a report 107. So I'll call to question on those. That carries. Thank you. Next, I'll ask for disclosure of potential pecuniary interest. Seeing none, I'll move to presentations. The presenter has changed. It is Warrant Officer Greg Husinga, who will, from the Poppy team, supporting the Poppy Memorial Outreach Program, who will make a presentation to Mayor Garrettson, thanking him for attending and supporting their fundraiser on July 4th, 2014, in memory of Major Michelle That microphone should be on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the support of Mayor Garrettson, the Poppy Memorial Outreach Program was able to raise twenty thousand, one hundred dollars. These funds will directly support our mission to bring the Poppy Memorial to all of our fallen families, our soldiers and Canadians across the country. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and the city of Kingston, for your ongoing support to the military in the memory of our fallen.
Thank you. Oh, that's really nice. (applause) So, I guess, the delegation on the addits is the amendment. So Neil Donnelly and Mark Allen will speak to council regarding clause one, report 106, received from EITP on, with regards to the on-street parking program implementation. Gentlemen, and you have five minutes as a delegation.
Five minutes. Okay. Honorable mayor, honorable councillors, thanks for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Neil Donnelly. I live in Area B, within the parking plan that you're going to be looking at tonight. I'm associated with an ad hoc neighborhood committee that coalesced in response to the parking plan. My colleague with me tonight is Mark Allen. Mark is suffering from a cold, and so he's allowed me to continue on at my peril. On June 17th, I presented my concerns to you. You may think my face is familiar. I had a number of issues. And tonight, I'm speaking to the amendments to the parking plan that are before you. So, Marcus, if I could have the slides, please? So here's a summary of what I'm going to run through quickly, and this is probably all you're interested in, is support for the amended parking plan. I'm going to address the consistency with the city of Kingston strategic plan, and talk about the commuter parking permits as an issue, ongoing, looking ahead, the city neighborhood cooperation, and then formally our appreciation and thanks. So, support for the EITP committee-approved amendments to the parking plan. So the residents affected by the parking plan, having had the opportunity to raise concerns at two council meetings, to meet on several occasions with councillors and city staff, councillors, namely Glover and Neil, thank you very much, to provide support at the September 16th EIT committee meeting, for the city staff recommended amendments to the parking plan. In consideration of all that, we support the parking plan amendments that were unanimously approved by the EIT committee. Importantly, we think that these new amendments are consistent with the city's strategic plan. You may remember when I was first here, I thought the plan was inconsistent with the city's strategic plan. But when we reflect now on the new amendments, we think that it's consistent with goals that ought to be pursued in a manner that minimizes the impacts of parking on the city's residents and businesses, impacts such as spillover parking on residential neighborhoods, and makes the best use of the existing supply. And further, council's guiding principles, we feel that the new amendments are consistent with the guiding principles. Manage Kingston's growth effectively by considering sustainability, preservation, and neighborhood revitalization when planning, developing, and intensifying the city. Commuter parking permits, we don't believe that it's good policy to have commuter parking permits. We believe that selling commuter parking permits is an unfavorable precedent. No other municipality does it. I'll say no more. City neighborhood cooperation going forward. We request continued community involvement as the trip generators, Queens, and KGH grow and create parking demand. Upfront involvement is beneficial to all parties. We believe that the trip generators have a duty to incorporate allowance for parking in their growth plans in accordance with the city's strategic plan, as noted. The amended parking plan recognizes the concern raised by five hundred-plus residents who responded to our outreach to them. We greatly appreciate the opportunity to meet with Sheila Kidd, Director of Transportation and Planning, the city staff and councillors, again, Glover and Neil, thank you. Thank you for listening. Judging by the amendments to the parking plan, there has been some real listening, and we thank you. Mark will answer your questions.
Oh, I need that setup. Are there any questions? Thank you very much. Frank Dixon, Andrea Blackwell, and John Colwell, Friends of Bell Park, will appear before council to speak to information report one, Bell Park Working Group update interim report. And again, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councillors. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I need to apologize on behalf of Andrea Blackwell. As many of us who've been successful in sport, she's volunteering coaching this evening and couldn't be here. So one of the first things I'd like to do is read a letter she had prepared that she would have made this evening, if I may. As an accomplished Olympian, I feel that it is critically important to have community resources available to our youth. I know that without the help of these resources throughout the eighties, it would not have been possible for me to train and prepare for a national team program. Playing pickup ball on the outdoor courts throughout the city was a way of life in between camps, and was critical in my development. Today, I'm a long-retired from the Olympic team, and as a coach, as a teacher, I feel strongly that it is critical to support our youth and encourage them to be involved in sport and to be healthy and active, just as our Canadian Sport for Life mandate suggests, and is so clearly indicated in the latest conclusions of the vital signs studies. This would have also hold true for low-income families and seniors, given particularly that golf is one of the few leisure activities that can be played for life. Tennis and basketball at Bell Park also need to play a significant role to support the mandate, which aligns with the city's desire for fostering a healthy and active community. Please consider this as the city moves forward, and with the Canadian Sport for Life mandate, that the funding and the maintenance of Bell Park and Bell Park Fairways be given the priority we deserve. Thank you very much. I have no other further comment. I know we're going to speak very briefly, so we won't take our five minutes, but I'll ask for Frank to make comment on behalf of the Friends of Bell Park.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councillors. Just wanted to have the slide up, this is right over here, please. Okay, so this is a seventeenth-century painting that shows that junior golf did not start with Tiger Woods. Vanderheest is a Rembrandt contemporary, so, this is one of my favorite paintings. Just sort of leading into what John and Andrea were saying, Bell Park was founded as a haven for youth and seniors. Kingston prides itself as a retirement community, and we all know that when youth are playing sports, they're not getting in trouble. They're doing things that will build skills for life. So the facility is important. It's been losing money. It's been neglected for a lot of years. And the Friends of Bell Park have been trying for the last two years to build support in the community, to understand what's been happening with the golf course, the maintenance aspects, operations. And I think the report that you have before you tonight is a major milestone in this facility, since nothing like it has ever been taken on before. So the problems at Bell Park are substantial, but they're solvable. And I think that's really all we have to say. There's a lot more work to be done, and the Friends of Bell Park will continue its work in the community. We have a lot of material that has not yet been used, and the success will occur when we get around to recognizing the importance of golf industry standards, and have those applied in the operations at Bell Park, in the clubhouse, range, and with programming, and also in how the golf course is taken care of. There's some major challenges there, because it's on a former landfill. You can't do certain things, like water everywhere. You have some areas that still have to be cleaned up, and, you know, there are challenges with cutting the grass, but it is a beautiful spot. It was, you know, planned by Doug Flur, who passed away a couple months ago. And Mr. Flur was well ahead of his time. He designed a beautiful spot there with marvelous trees. It's just a very interesting place to be. So, thank you very much.
Are there any questions for the delegations this evening? Councillor O'Sannick?
Thank you, Mayor Garrettson. In the information report, it talks about Bell Park's fortieth anniversary coming up. Is that next year?
Yes, it is. The current season is actually the fortieth season, but since it started in 1975, then 2015 will be the fortieth. And it's interesting, at Flagstick Magazine, the people who actually run that are Bell Park people. The fellow who owns it grew up playing at Bell Park, and the managing editor worked at Bell Park, so they got a major interest in, you know, doing some good reporting there.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, gentlemen. Our, we do not have any briefings, are there any petitions to present? No petitions? Motions of congratulation, recognition, sympathy, condolences, and speedy recovery. We have, start with the motion of, motions of... Motion of congratulations. Moved by Mayor Garrettson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Neil, that the congratulations at Kingston City Council be extended to CKWS Television on the occasion of their sixty, of its sixtieth anniversary. CKWS and Core Center Entertainment continue to serve the residents of Kingston and southeastern Ontario by delivering the news that matters. I had to really, you know, accentuate that part, because I believe it to be true.[914.44][914.44](laughter) And providing coverage, well, I'm sorry, I was just reading. Bill, I apologize if I offended CKWS. That matters, and providing coverage of people and events throughout our community. Congratulations on this milestone. Moved by Councillor Berg, seconded by Mayor Garrettson, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to the first, wait, this one was amended. That congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to the first thirty-two lady cadets in the regular and reserve officer training program at the Royal Military College of Canada. On September 27th, a commemorative plaque was unveiled to honor the first female cadets who entered RMC in 1980. Among them is Councillor Dorothy Hector. Congratulations, Councillor Hector, and classmates who paved the way for future generations of women at RMC. Moved by Mayor Garrettson, seconded by Councillor Berg, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Invista on the occasion of their seventy-fifth anniversary of nylon manufacturing. When it opened in 1942, the Kingston site was Canada's first and the world's second nylon plant. The plant was originally approved as a defense project in support of the war effort. Today, Invista's Kingston, today, Invista's Kingston nylon manufacturing operation has modern production facilities and has over eight hundred employees who produce a wide variety of products, including airbag and carpet fiber, that are all, that are exported all over the globe, and is home to Invista's state-of-the-art global research and development centers for nylon fibers. Congratulations on this milestone in Vista. We have one more motion of recognition, which was just submitted. Moved by Deputy Mayor Neil, seconded by Councillor Patterson, that appreciation of Kingston City Council be extended to Len Corcoran Excavating Limited Workers for their fine work and great customer service, extended to the businesses and residents as they continue the Williamsville Reconstruction Project. Many residents of Williamsville, and particularly Palace Road, residents and Princess Street businesses, businesses have expressed their deep appreciation for this assistance and helpful nature of workers throughout the project. Can I ask the clerk to separate that last one in the vote, please? And I believe that is all of them. So I'll call to question on the first three that I read out. That carries. Now on the remaining one that I just read out regarding Len Corcoran Excavating, Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will, and I recognize you.
I just want to explain why I'm going to be voting against this. I don't think it's appropriate for us to be congratulating people, congratulating a business for doing the job that we hired them to do. I have all the respect in the world for Len Corcoran Excavating. They do a lot of great work in the city, but I don't think it's appropriate for us to be using our motions of congratulation for this particular purpose. So that's why I'll be voting against it. Thank you, Deputy.
I return the chair, and if I can be recognized?
Please.
The reason I brought this forward is because of the dozens of people on Palace Road and the businesses on Upper Princess, who have told me what a wonderful job the crews have done on the site. Whether it's carrying groceries for elderly people, whether it's carrying garbage and recycling for people, they've, I think it's gone, they go beyond their call of duty. They go beyond what is normally expected of a contractor. And that's why I brought the motion forward, in recognition of those dozens of people who've spoken to me about what a great job they've done. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'll call to question. That carries. Report 102 from the CAO.
Moved by Councillor Wrightsall, seconded by Councillor Hector, that report number 102 from the Chief of Ministry of Officer Consent be received and adopted.
Would anybody like to separate any of the items? Okay, we'll deal with all of them together, then. The first one is Parking License Agreement Car Share Program. Second is Parking Bylaw Amendments. Third, Award of Contract Diesel Exhaust Extraction Systems. D, Appointment of Municipal Bylaw Officers, Enforcement Officers. And E, Appointment of Municipal Bylaw Enforcement Officers. F, Amendments to the lease terms for commercial sign for Rideau Town Center at Pittsburgh Park Place. Approval of initial study grant application, brownfield projects, areas one seat for the properties located at 493, 495, and 497 Princess Street, to Creighton Street, and 19 to 23 Chatham Street. H, Award of Contract GIS Strategy SS Assessment and Planning. I, Zoning Bylaw Amendment Application 845, Gardner's Road. J, Downtown Services Refocus for Maintenance Progress Report. I'll call to question. That carries. So, report 103 has been deferred, and I go to report 104 from the Heritage Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Garrettson. I would like to present Heritage Report Number 104, and ask that it be received and adopted.
Moved by Councillor Shell, seconded by Councillor Wrightsall, that report number 104 from the Municipal Heritage Committee be received and adopted.
Would anybody like to separate any of the items? I'll call to question on the report, then. Carries, report 105 for Mark.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to present report number 105 from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee, moved by myself, Councillor Hutchison, and seconded by Councillor Shell for consideration by council.
Moved by Councillor Hutchison, seconded by Councillor Shell, that report number 105 from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Does anybody want to separate any of them? Yes, Councillor Wrightsall?
Number one, please.
I'll deal with the balance first. Appointment to Kingston Arts Council Review Committee Civic Collection Acquisition, request for a report regarding future exhibition planning at the city of Kingston Municipal Museums and City Hall. I'll call to question on those three. That carries. Rural Parks Review. Councillor Wrightsall?
Thank you, Mayor Garrettson. I just wanted to take a moment to thank staff for the hard work and all the time and effort that went into turning out an excellent report here in regards to rural parks, and it really does clean up and give a lot of focus to properties that really deserve our attention from the city Parks and Recreation Department. So, thank you very much.
Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Mayor Garrettson. I'm thrilled to see this report. It certainly points out that there really was a problem out there that we had to address. Staff held two very well-attended public meetings. The public showed up in great force, and they brought to Ford what they need and want in their recreation parks. What was noted here is that, yes, many of these parks that we had listed actually are wetlands, and there's a recommendation to take them out. There's also a notice here that many of these parks are not actually active park. They're pieces of land we own that may be nice, but are unusable as active park. Staff noted that, yes, seven parks need improvement, and they need improvement quickly. And these are major parks that are well-used, and they could certainly use this, and the constituents are already thrilled to see this. Staff have also noted that there are twelve waterfront parks in the rural area, and I believe all of them have never been developed, and we have some significant ones away from downtown, up on the Rideau Canal, and out along Lake Ontario, which are identified here as needing planning or reports or upgrades, and part of the future waterfront master planning exercise. They've also noted that the extreme northwest of the city, Sharpton Glenvale, a large rural area, has very limited parkland. It has one in the extreme southeast part, but the rest of it has no parks, and there's a good recommendation here for a park. And this is very timely, considering that Samsung is now cutting down a thousand acres of trees to put in solar panels. Now, there are also three other issues that were noted that, out of this, that came to light, issues for the next council to look into. The first one is that Elginburg and Joyceville, the hamlets, that they do not have city parks. We are actually using the playgrounds that are in the adjoining, that are in the neighborhood schools, and we're going to have to look at some kind of an arrangement with the school board for that. They noted there are properties that aren't actually used as active parkland. There's one in particular where the fellow's been maintaining it for twenty-eight years as a side yard, and we have to look at what we're going to be doing with these properties that we don't need, so we're going to have to assess them in the future. It also noted that Brewer's Mills has disjointed parks, there's several up there, and in the hamlet where the population lives, there's no active playground. It is well down the road at John Brewer's Park, and something we're going to have to look at is bringing, possibility of bringing that recreation facilities down into the hamlet, and giving where the population is, and giving them a better park in the hamlet. So again, I commend staff for this wonderful report, and the rural residents have already told me how delighted they are with it. Thank you.
Anybody else on this? I'll call to question. That carries. Report 106 from EITP.
Yes. I wish to submit report 106 from Environment Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee, duly moved and seconded.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Neil, seconded by Councillor Hutchison, that report number 106 from the Environment Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee be received and adopted.
There's the one clause with respect to the on-street parking program. I'll call to question. That carries. Report 107.
Mayor Garrettson, it's my pleasure to present report number 107 from the Planning Committee, and ask that it be received and adopted. Thank you.
Moved by Councillor Berg, seconded by Councillor O'Sannick, that report number 107 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
There's one clause with respect to the application for official plan amendment. Is there just the one clause, Mr. Clerk? I know it's a big clause, but is there another one? Where does it end? Just the one? Okay, I'll call to question. Oh, yes, Councillor Wrightsall?
Thank you, Mayor Garrettson. It's been probably two years' worth of work, and a lot of work by the planning staff, and by a residents committee in Pittsburgh District, in order to come to fruition with the establishment of a zoning bylaw that allows us to have more commercial over on the east side of the city. And on behalf of myself and the residents over there, I just want to say a big thank you to the planning staff for all the work they did. you to the planning staff for all the work they did in order to bring this forward this evening. Thank you.
Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Mayor Garrettson. I would also like to commend staff for this, it's a great job, and I'm thrilled to see this. Not as thrilled as my residents are. The rural residents on the east side of the river will finally be able to actually be able to shop in their own community, so they won't have to cross the causeway to get a bottle of wine, they won't have to travel all the way to the west end for children's clothing, nor will they have to go all the way to Ganon Oakway just to get a hammer. They're finally getting the commercial they deserve over there and they need, so that their life is a lot simpler, and they will be really appreciative of this. Thank you.
Councillor Hutchison?
My understanding is this is in line with what we saw before, and this is just the technical development of it, or report on it? Because I was just wondering, we just got it tonight, and I was hoping that someone could give us the broad strokes.
Commissioner Hurdle, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. This is actually, this includes the proposed amendment for the official plan to change our policies or commercial policies, and this work was directed by council last, actually, I believe it was maybe earlier this year, and it has been at Planning Committee, one first through a presentation of information, which the public attended and commented on. And again, this report went to Planning Committee. The reason why it's being fast-tracked to council is because we do have a, currently an OMB appeal on this, and we are working with certain timeframes, and we recognize that the next council meeting is not until November, so in order to meet our timeframes, we've set out through this OMB process, this is why it's being brought to council now rather than in November.
That's, that's fine as to what, why we're speeding through, and I'm fine with that personally, but what I was looking for was whether staff had anything they wanted to add about what might have changed in the interim since we last saw it, or what the broad strokes of what this will do. That's, that's all I was looking for.
Okay, anybody else? I'll call to question. That carries. New motions, oh, sorry, we have one miscellaneous, oh, no, did I get, yeah, I did that. One miscellaneous item with respect to a special occasion permit, will somebody move that? Councillor George and Councillor Neal? Call to question. There are no new motions. Are there any notices? Oh, yes, on the addits.
Your worship, we're still missing one vote on that particular motion.
Oh, we're waiting for one more person to vote. Please vote again on the miscellaneous. Okay, that carries. There are no new motions. Are there any notices of motion to present? I forgot to mention the information reports. So, there's the Bell Park Working Group Report and the Tender Contract Awards and established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of August. Any on those? Councillor Hutchison?
For one, please? Bell Park Working Group update. First, first of all, I want to thank the working, Bell Park Working Group and especially staff for what is clearly their intent to try to make this process work, and the amount of options and improvements that they're examining, and which the working group representatives pointed out earlier. I just wanted to say that in reading it, I had just a couple of things I thought I'd like to add that is, and perhaps staff will have a comment on this, the character of the golf course, meaning, have we any discussions about how we feel the golf course should be trade, and in what character of the golf course we would present to the public and to visitors?
Okay, so, information reports are just to ask questions. Do you have any questions?
This is my question. Have we done this, okay? And just as it would relate, perhaps, down the road to a marketing plan.
Commissioner Hurdle, do you have an answer for that question? Mr. Falwell?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, we have, a number of our meetings talked about the marketing of Bell Park and the history that we could capture through magazine publications like the 40th Anniversary, and how we can portray where it came from, where it's been, including some of our environmental challenges and successes on the course, and we would continue to try and promote Bell Park as that unique opportunity for members and our users.
And I noticed that we were looking at disc golf, and I was wondering if we'd looked in any way at footy golf, as a way of attracting a much broader audience, birthday parties, that sort of thing, and upping the, the public usage of the facility.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Footy golf has come up as long, as well as disc golf and other opportunities to create more activity on the actual golf course. We would, we have some challenges to overcome in terms of introducing that type of activity in the golf environment, that we would need to certainly educate our golfing community, but also those new opportunities on the course. We've also looked at different types of junior golf in the information report. We speak to a larger golf hole to promote new and junior development, so that when you're standing over that 10-foot putt, instead of the approximately four-inch hole, you have about a 15-inch hole, so it makes us all more successful to enjoy the sport. So, we've, we've talked about a number of those, and we will continue to do that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? How about on the, the other information report, second one? We also have an information report from council, 2014 FCM Board of Directors Meeting from Councillor Hector. Did you have anything on that, Councillor Hector? No, just submitting it. Then I will go to the minutes.
Moved by Councillor Hutchison, seconded by Councillor Berg, that the municipal city council meeting, number 2014-28, Tuesday, September 23rd, 2014, be confirmed.
Call to question. That carries. We have a number of items that have been tabled. Is there any other business?
Just for clarification purposes, Bylaw 10 was added by way of the addits, and Bylaw 5 was withdrawn as per CAO consent, item I. So, the first vote is moved by Councillor O'Sannick, seconded by Councillor Patterson, that Bylaws 1 through 4, Bylaws 6, 7, 9, and 10 be given their first and second reading.
Call to question. Carries.
And the second vote is moved by Councillor Pa, or, sorry, moved by Councillor O'Sannick, seconded by Councillor Patterson, that Bylaws 6 through 10 be given their third reading.
Call to question. That carries. Moved German, Councillor Hector, Councillor George. That carries. Have a good day.